I know, that's why I started.
Uh, I could do it, I guess.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Richard.
I'll second it.
Temporary chair.
Is it temporary?
Make sure you got temporary in there.
Yeah, yeah, temp.
Shall we start the meeting? Sounds like somebody else is coming. Better wait, make sure it's not Peter. Uh, it's seven oh four oh, uh, bring the meeting to order. Don't have a lot on the agenda, but the first thing we need to do is review the minutes from February second. You know, I've read them at home, uh, but I had a couple of things on here.
Oh, we got another.
Oh, he looks like the big chairman.
Nick, um, what's the difference between the, what you did?
There's just small corrections I made.
Okay, nothing major?
Nothing huge, just a few things.
Okay.
But nothing crazy.
Cause I'd looked at the, um, original that you sent us and, um, my wife was working at home today. And so I never saw the, uh, the revised version.
Yeah, not too much out there.
Okay.
Like this?
Hey Peter, did you, you got the material?
Yeah, I do. Good enough for me.
Anybody need more time? Uh, anybody got any proposed comments or changes on the minutes?
Um, I have a few.
Nick looking at me later.
Go ahead. Um, so under new business, uh, item one, um, appears to still be the third paragraph, um. Added a little bit to that paragraph, but, um, my, uh, suggested change comes before that. So it would be the one, two, three, fourth line down where we're talking about the planning board's priorities. Uh, sentence that's, so that sentence starts, uh, George made a motion that the planning board's top priorities are permitting. Um, and then, then, uh, I would insert the word updating. Shore, uh, shore land and I would add zoning after shore land. And, and then, and I would add a, the four subdivision ordinance. And then on the next page, uh, when we're, uh, discussing, uh, Mr., uh, George?
George.
George.
Uh, Spanish is what I'm saying.
Yeah, right, right, right. Just without, or something I used to always call me. Um, the second, let me see, wait a minute. Third line, uh, end of, right in the middle, it says, "To a bunch of twenty year olds." Uh, I would add, uh, because this is relevant in terms of further discussion, uh, that we had, uh, for parties and other events. Cause he talked about renting it, I think it was for a bachelor party and maybe a wedding and other things. And then, uh, the second paragraph, last line. Wait a minute, um.
Maybe the third paragraph on this one, because he had.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's the third paragraph. So, uh, it would be the third line from the bottom of that paragraph that starts with CEO.
Yeah.
And at the end of that law, uh, sentence, uh, which ends with enforcement, I would add, uh, under the commercial development review ordinance. Cause we were discussing, um, converting a residential structure to a, uh, commercial use at that point. That's all I got.
I have a couple of, you got any beer? No, you didn't.
No.
I got some mind very minor ones. Just the fourth line on the top, uh, January nineteenth, comma.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, let's see. Second page, um, third line, last paragraph, third line. These types of incidents, uh, should be G E N T S rather than C S, C E, incidents.
Okay, okay.
That, that's it for me. Roger?
You got it.
You have a motion?
You have a motion to accept the minutes as amended of February second?
I'll second.
All is in favor. We'll pass the minutes of February second.
Did Mr. George ever, um, get into touch with you or were you out through your office hours?
No, he never signed.
Okay.
He don't call me.
Maybe well, yeah. He saw about the email, but.
And I, I responded to yours. I, I went down there last summer. Someone complained about the septic malfunction.
Yeah, well.
It's pretty hard to find that this time.
No, no, you couldn't, but.
Yeah.
Even last summer I went down and, I mean, that septic's only three, four years old.
Yeah. I think one of the things he said were they were parking vehicles on top of it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They weren't when I was there, but.
Well, anyway, he, he'll, he, he will or he won't come and see you or whatever.
Is that a change or just a video?
Can't remember. Bruce Plod put it in, I can't remember that one. Okay, uh, onto our next order of business is two thousand seventeen ordinance work. Perhaps somebody can light me on exactly what that, uh, is. Is that our priorities or what we're doing or is it discussion of, uh, the sign ordinance, uh?
Sort of all of the above.
What we're doing.
This came out of a discussion between Peter Rushman and myself and, uh, and I had suggested we had, have something on the agenda today to talk about, um, you know, what guidance we got from the select board, uh, such as it was. And, um, and also how to proceed, cause, um, I mean, my take on the select board meeting was, uh, there were four selectmen there, one never said anything. Two, uh, kind of were in agreement with each other and, and the third, uh, just seemed mad. And, um, the, um, and what I took away, it had a lot of, reminded me a lot of when I worked for Legislative Committee, where you're never quite sure what they're saying. But the, uh, I, I, what I took away from it and Peter seemed to agree, um, Peter Rushman did, that, um, that at least get, um, Michael Barrett, the first selectman and, and Ernie, agreed that we should stick with our priorities, um, in terms of, um, that the next ordinance that the planning board puts most of its energy into is the shoreline zoning ordinance. But that they also want us to concurrently work on the sign ordinance with Mr. Lussard and Denny doing all the heavy lifting and us basically reviewing it to make sure it's acceptable. And, um, and that's about all I could glean from that meeting myself. I don't know if others could, um, get more out of it than that. Have, if that's the case, then we basically are in the situation of having to, um, still work on two ordinances at the same time. The shoreline zoning is obviously our initiative. We would do all the drafting, sign ordinance, Ms. Lussard and, uh, and Denny, will be doing the drafting as, as, you know, as directed by us. So, um, the, uh, so it, it seemed like we should have a discussion of, um, I, I didn't realize Mr. Lussard was gonna be here, but you may recall the discussion we had out in the hallway after the meeting with Mr. Lussard and, and Denny that, um, talking about inviting them to, um, the, uh, probably the first meeting in March. And, um, Denny had suggested that we focus on, focus that meeting on talking about the changes we want to the format of the ordinance. Start, start off simple, if you will. And then the, on shoreline zoning, I think we need to discuss amongst ourselves how we're gonna start, you know? Where do we start, you know, do we, um, at one point, I think, you, you provided everybody with copies of the new state guidelines. I'm not even sure I could find mine now, although I'm sure it's available online.
I could, uh, I actually thought, I don't know if I could find mine anymore, but I, when I was, got the agenda today, decided that it might be a good idea to go down and see Colin someday and pick up some more copies of that and, uh, make sure everybody has a copy to review and, and, uh, you know, have a, so we all have a copy as we're going through it. My thinking on part of it would be that, um, as we work through the shoreline zoning ordinance, I could kind of act as, um, a consultant or writer, so to speak, of the changes and, and, uh, you know, obviously I think we need to probably go through the beginning and work our way through it. But I could, worst part for me is my computer skills and putting in check, uh, track changes and all that. I'm not very good at that kind of stuff, but, um, you know, we could discuss the different sections and I could, or maybe it's something Nick would do, but my thinking of when I was offered is that I have a fairly good knowledge of
Right.
those sections and stuff and be easy for me to do and make the changes we wanna make change. But anyway, no.
Well, so there's the guidelines and the other, yeah, so there's that sort of logistical stuff. What we want to, I mean, we should discuss what, if anything, from those new guidelines, which apparently the state decided not to enforce, um, or require towns make those changes. At least that's the last I, or maybe something's changed, that would be a good thing.
I could, I could talk to him.
Yeah, that would be a, a real, that would be important to discuss with Colin. And, um, and then the other thing, of course, is to look, uh, look at the comprehensive plan to see what changes in there, apply to the shoreline zoning ordinance, um, either directly or indirectly. And, um.
Can I, let me ask a question of the board here in terms of, are, obviously that's, we, as we said, permitting is the number one issue and shoreline zoning being the next kind of thing. Are, is that something that we plan on initiating or starting on, like, no, say right away? Not in this meeting or maybe even the next meeting, but, or, or we're not holding off until the commercial development review ordinance gets approved and all that? Or, how far into our meeting schedule, uh, do we foresee starting on that?
How much more do we have to do in, uh, in implementing the, uh, commercial, uh?
We have to come up with an application and a
What do we have to do with that?
Checklist, what, pardon me?
What do we have to do between now and, and, uh, downtown meeting?
Uh, we don't have to do anything.
The only thing that's coming up is on the twenty first is the, uh, public hearing that the select board holds because it was postponed because of the snowstorm in January. That's it.
And that's not a planning board meeting, is it?
No, no, it's a select board, uh, hearing.
Alright, so we don't really have to pay any attention to it?
Well, some of us would probably go.
Yeah.
No, 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 sorry, it's the planning board time. So, maybe we could, uh, set working on next meeting, get that working on the, uh, shoreline zoning. Uh, by the time you, you know, you can get the, uh, copy of the law, alright? And then, um, I, I remember I talked about, I can get a copy of, uh, what they did in Smithfield. They put that in, uh, force, or a year and a half ago. And I haven't gone up to and talked to the code enforcement officer yet, but, uh, I'd go up and get a copy of that and bring that in. You know, they did a lot of, they did all the work, you know, and see how it kind of fits with ours. Be interesting to see that.
Gary, you know, um, items on the incoming items for permits at all, uh, coming in next?
The, yeah, we got two applications we will have.
Yeah, there's one definitely.
The next meeting.
Commercial development, shoreline zoning?
Shoreline zoning, both of them.
So we're not gonna have a huge amount of time to.
I guess, I guess one of the thoughts I have is when we start working on shoreline zoning, should we do like we did with the commercial development review ordinance for most part? We, did we not pretty much pick days?
Yeah.
To, a meeting to, to vote to it or whatever?
Yeah, it was, it was permits first. If you did, there's no permits, then we won't tell you anything.
Yeah, although we did set aside some dates that we asked Gary to hold off scheduling any permits.
Didn't, didn't we for a while just do the permits, like, once a month versus?
Yeah, right.
My thinking going to your, uh, point is rather than perhaps, if we're, if we're gonna start on shoreline zoning, rather than say the first week in March, which would be the next ma, first meeting in March, that maybe we would say the second meeting in March would be when we start looking at shoreline zoning or, or even that far.
Well, don't we have to work on the checklist for commercial review?
If it, if it passes.
Do we need, do we need to do the checklist if the ordinance fails?
Do you?
What's that?
I thought there was work on the one, one way or the other.
Yeah, actually, I think, it just wouldn't be very, all that major, I don't think, would be, I think there's some things missing.
Yeah, so the question in my mind is, do we hold off until it passes or do we, are we proactive and say, this is gonna pass? We oughta have that stuff in, in, and ready and.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't start working on it until we're sure that it passes, uh, myself. I mean, I, you just never know, you know, what's gonna happen, but, um, but I do think we could, um, say, starting with the next meeting, um, well, if we got two applications, that's gonna probably take us an hour, somewhere around there. That leaves us an hour. Or a little less because of the minutes, um, so three quarters of an hour. The, um, um, we could, uh, schedule Mr. Lussard and Denny, um, with regard to the sign ordinance.
As a half of that meeting?
A half, or, or part of that, three quarters of an hour, and then leave a small amount of time for, um, making sure everybody's got information that they're gonna review for the following meeting that we devote to shoreline zoning. So that would be the guidelines, the Smithfield ordinance, um, and then just reiterate the, you know, the instructions that everybody, we have a partial list already on what needs to be dealt with.
When is that book coming up anyway? It's not in March, is it?
It is in March, yes.
Well, that's, that's next month.
Right.
So, we, you know, there's, we got another week here and this month's gone and, we're gonna have to start looking at our checklist here sooner or later, or?
Well, we can do it, you know, find out, like George says, when do we find out whether, whether it passes? Because if it passes, it'll be a lot more work, obviously, right?
I think we'll, we'll, we'll meet before that.
If it doesn't pass, it certainly won't take as long and, so.
Yeah, it seems to me, uh, my thinking is that if, if we spent time working on the checklist based on the proposed changes to the ordinance and the ordinance doesn't pass, we've kind of put time and effort into something and.
Right.
So, my thinking would be, I guess I kind of, I guess I don't think I was agreeing with George that two ordinances next meeting and then devote the rest of the meeting to the sign ordinance. The following meeting will devote to shoreline zoning and by then, that would be the second meeting in March. When's town meeting?
What is it, Nick? Do you know? Twenty first, no?
No, it's like seventeenth ranking, I think.
Yeah.
So anyway, that would, that's time is just outright that, uh, we could either work on the, uh, checklist and stuff either, well, say the, the first meeting after the ordinance passes, it would be the first meeting in, uh, April.
Yeah.
First week of April.
Isn't that right? You got your calendar there?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the date of the town meeting is when?
It's, I think, I think it's the seventeenth, which is the day after our second meeting in March. Little meeting on March sixteenth.
Right, so the, the earliest we would know would be that first meeting.
Yeah, okay, so Nick, so what, if anybody disagrees with this, maybe we need to vote on it or whatever, but, so Nick knows. Uh, current thinking, I guess, is, uh, next meeting we will deal with, um, the applications and the second half of the meeting will, uh, deal with, uh, Mr. Lussard and Denny on the sign ordinance. And then the second meeting in March would be shoreline zoning. And the first meeting in April, hopefully we don't have too many applications. We work on the, uh,
Checklist.
Checklist and I think there's something else that we need to do, is that, is the application maybe modification?
Well, probably the findings of fact and law need to be revised too.
Some of the wording.
Yeah.
And plus there were some other, yeah, there's some quirky double negatives in there anyway that probably need to be, uh, changed. But, um, um, we've added at, at least one if, uh, review criteria that we have to make a finding on, which has to do with parking. And then I think one about, wasn't there a second one about, uh, having title right or interest? So, I mean, those wouldn't be big deals. I, I actually was thinking of, I would, if people were amenable, I mean, we can talk about this again when Peter's here, but, you know, I'd be glad to volunteer to come up with drafts and then, and then, you know, bring, and then we could, everybody could review that at the, uh.
I agree, that's good time maintenance. It, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to have five people sitting around the table working on a checklist over there.
Well, it's.
We need five people review it.
Yeah.
Find out your mistakes.
Right, no, exactly, um, and, and the other thing too is, you know, we're, we're not that far away from when permits is gonna kind of start coming in, uh, on a very regular basis, the shoreline zoning stuff that people wanna do, you know, when they open up their camps on Memorial Day.
Yep, that's what these two are coming next week, or the weekend.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so is anybody opposed to that new purpose schedule?
No.
Um, you work on Smithfield and getting, I'll get guidelines and copy of the statute. I think that would be helpful to have as well.
Yeah.
Statute has some things in there that, as a matter of fact, I'm not sure whether some of the non-conformance type stuff, uh, may have been amended in statute as well. So that's kind of what we'll do. Can I ask a question on this? So we prepare for the sign ordinance, uh, um, thing, does everybody here have a copy?
Yep.
Of Paul's draft?
Yeah, that was last, like, given on last meeting, wasn't it?
Uh, we do, we should have copies, I know. Hard, yes, yeah, that was.
Yeah, that was in the email too, wasn't it?
Yes.
Wasn't last meeting though, was it?
Yeah, it was five, six days.
Four.
Yeah, yeah.
Has.
That's, that's the final one, okay.
Who has actually reviewed that to any extent of closeness to it?
I, I have.
I have not seen any greater detail. I read it through, I get the idea of it. Basically, you, I mean, you can quickly summarize it is, uh, the fact, oh, it, the size of, size of a sign is tied to the speed limit in the particular zone you're in. You know, put it, make it, make it real simple, one word. That's what I look at it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's anything that people have for comments for Paul or Mr. Lussard? I don't know how you wanna be referred to as, but, uh, in terms of anything that, thoughts we have before we delve into it in the form of meeting type of thing and, uh.
Well, I, I, I don't have anything organized now, um, as I s, kind of, um, mentioned in passing was, um, uh, I'd like Denny's suggestion of that we devote what time we have at the next meeting to talking about, um, the format of the, or, of the ordinance or how we would like to see it, cause, um, I mean, I, 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 it's, the way it's crafted right now is inconsistent with how the other ordinances in town are, are, and it, it's not very easy to understand. That's one reason why it's not easy to understand, I think, for the, for the public. And so, um, um, Denny had suggested we start with that. It's a little easier before we get into the substance like you were discussing, which we already know we have disagreements with Mr. Lussard on and, um, from our past discussions. So, focus on that, ask Mr. Lussard and Denny to go back, redraft, you know, reorganize it basically. Basically, the first step, similar to the first step that, that, um, Chris Huck went through with the commercial development re, reorganizing it so it makes, you know, flows better and is easier for people to understand.
Yeah, and I, I know it'll also have to be put into a format that, uh, like George, I guess, said, have the ordinances have, you know, you get the applicability statement, the administration section.
Right.
You know, the meat of the ordinance, uh, enforcement definitions and, and put that in a, a format that.
Okay, so we can provide that to them, you know?
At the next meeting.
Yeah, and then they can run with it.
Yeah, so, you know, if people could review the, review that before the next meeting.
So you have headings, outline headings that you want sections, create certain sections. So, you know, just give it.
Yeah, that would be easy enough to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, it's, it's kind of the best way to go, so you know exactly how we would want to see it and then we can discuss, I mean, on the way, we're gonna have discussions of content, uh, you know, the actual standards and stuff. As long, we're gonna get it started in terms of the proper ordinance format. One thing that I would also say, I don't, I don't. One thing that I would also say, I don't want to get too much into specifics, but, in my initial review of the, uh, ordinance, I know there's, there's like all kinds of definitions, many of them aren't in the ordinance. I know you said you threw it in there so that you're better off to have more than you need, but if it isn't referred to in the ordinance, a definition as a definition doesn't mean anything. In other words, if you can't find that word in the ordinance, a definition of, uh, I'm just gonna make up something, freestanding temporary sign, if freestanding temporary sign is not in the text of the ordinance, it makes no sense that a definition of that in the definition section. And as I was going through the, the first part, we're talking about general, the general section of the ordinance, I, I know there's like six pages of definitions, but about half of it, the, uh, terms and the general standards aren't defined, but there's a bunch of that definitions that are there that aren't in the text, so. That, that's one thing that I'd like to, uh, I'd have a comment on.
Yeah. Thinking ahead beyond the next meeting to when, you know, once we get the format the way of the sign ordinance the way we want it, and, and Mr. Lassard and Denny have made those changes, and we get down to brass tacks talking about the standards themselves, and, um, just so you know, Mr. Lassard, my wife is a senior attorney at the Maine Municipal Association. She's a municipal attorney, so I, I ran this question by her. For those of you that have reviewed what Mr. Lassard has already proposed, you know that, um, there are not only different standards for the different districts as laid out in the comprehensive plan, but there are different standards for the same district. Uh, and actually, do we have the map? I just want to.
Yep.
Well, maybe I can describe it. So, the village district that's in this part of town that includes Route twenty, the section of Route twenty seven, and it goes all the way down to the railroad tracks, and, and the depot, is all one village district. So there are different standards for the depot road.
Oh, versus, uh.
Yeah, and there's a question of whether that's legal. If, and it really depends on how the, the exact wording of the comprehensive plan. And it would be nice to know that in advance of us getting to the discussions of the substance, of the substance of the standards, whether we can go do that or not. Um, and so, I was gonna suggest that we get a legal opinion from, not my wife, of course, but from MMA's legal department, 'cause they deal with this stuff all the time.
Well, that's even more important when you're dealing with village, uh, the Lakes Village area, because you have, uh, the Lakes Village, which is really kind of the heart of the tourist area. But when you're driving up Route twenty seven, uh, that's the same district according to the, to the comprehensive plan map. But the drive up Route twenty seven from the turnoff, uh, uh, to go to Mount Vernon, it's a much different character, you know, all the way down to the fire department, where the speed limit changes to thirty-five miles an hour. So you've got fifty-five mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour, and then you're in town of twenty-five. And then you have the West Road, which is the entrance to the golf course, which is a whole other different character. So, you know, you, I think that if you, you know, I mean, if you're bound by some law that doesn't say you can cut up a district into micro-districts, then I'm gonna say, just generally, the sign ordinance will either be too stringent for way out, you know, where day's real estate is compared to the town, the village, uh, or it'll be too lax, which is the way it is now, because if you have all lighted signs in the Lakes Village, I don't think you want that, but you might want it out of day's real estate.
Yeah.
That's the part that I was looking at.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, it's just, um, it, it just seems like we need to answer that question so that we know how far, how, whether we can further divide it up, if you will, uh, the districts, uh, beyond what was done in the comprehensive plan. It really comes down to the com- what the comprehensive plan says.
If you can ask the question relative to what Peter just asked, it is speed limit related. Forty-five miles an hour, forty miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour. If you can, if you can make adjustments based on speed limit alone, then that, that would settle it, you know, those are boundaries that are established, made near OT puts up the signs.
Well, that, that's something we could incorporate into the letter, or email, I was gonna suggest we do it by email, the way, um, that the appeals board did with regard to Dollar General, because I think we get a faster turnaround, and also that allows us to include with links the comprehensive plan, um, and, um, and the map, for example.
Time, you're restricted by federal law to time, place, and manner of display. And those factors, time, place, and manner, can be adjusted, not by, I mean, in, in the districts, you have to have a reason for a district, you know, you have a reason for a larger district in the comprehensive plan. But the sign ordinance, if it's speed limit related, you could say that within the statement of purpose that the sign ordinance is adjusted for speed, uh, viewer, uh, you know, time recognition, and so forth.
Yeah, but the, the, the problem is that there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that contemplated a sign ordinance. So consequently, there's no reference to, you know, doing it by speed limit, for example, or anything else. Yeah, so that's really the, that's the comparison, that's what's, that's what's sort of the driving force here is. What will the comprehensive plan, what, what latitude does the comprehensive plan give us?
In the state rulemaking, uh, the DOT, uh, three years ago, has took over a lot of the fine tuning of the sign ordinance, the way that the state, uh, enforces it. And, uh, that is a document that does make a relationship to speed and setback outside of the roadway, and so on and so forth. So there is a, some sort of a, a basis for using speed to calculate something. You know, they, they don't regulate size of signs and that, they didn't tweak that, but they did tweak the setback. So there is some relationship to speed and placement of sign.
Could, could you and Danny kind of look into that a little bit with, uh, say, the Augusta and see how they, what, how the.
Well, they, they, they're not town officials, so they cannot access MMA, only we can as members.
No, no, why can't you go to, why can't you go to Augusta?
I can get that document from the DOT, they don't, I have it at home, actually, like a year.
I mean, could you, could you, why couldn't they confer with, uh, Augusta, the official down at Augusta, and talk to him about how they got around?
He's already. He's, he's familiar with Augusta's.
Oh, so why, why can't they talk?
But that's, that's not, we're, 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 what, that rule has maybe one factor in it, but we're, we have to make sure this is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. If the comprehensive plan didn't lay the groundwork for this ordinance, then.
Let's say it did, what do we do then?
We have two choices, we, we either modify, we either modify the ordinance so it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Or you modify the comprehensive.
Or you modify the comprehensive plan.
Good, we'll find out.
Right, and, and.
If the sign ordinance can't go into effect until some future date, then that other change could occur.
Right.
And what we do need to make sure that what we draft is, is, is legal, I guess, and I, I agree with George, we should get an opinion on that thing about different standards within the same district, 'cause that district is, can be a big area.
Yeah, it, it just wasn't anticipated at the time.
The question I have, and Nick may know, uh, and maybe times have changed, um, but, uh, to get a, a, when I was on the tree committee, I got lambasted, uh, by the town office for asking MMA for an illegal opinion dealing with the sign, I mean, a sign, yeah, the tree ordinance, and not having got approval from the selectman to go there. Do we still need approval from the selectman to, to go to MMA for our opinion?
Well, my impression is that must have changed, I, I forgot about what you went through, but, um.
I remember that little story.
The, um, uh, Carrie seems to, I, I, I just wonder how much of that was our previous town manager, and how much of it? 'Cause Carrie seems to want to know when we're seeking a legal opinion with just a CC, and, um, but doesn't necessarily seem, at least, you know, the ones that the appeals board have gotten, they didn't consult with her or the select board in advance, so.
I know, I know that the tree issue was controversial, and we had a particular selectman and the town manager were both, I'll put it this way, against what we did, what we were doing, and I ended up getting, uh, a letter from the town manager, an email, saying that, uh, no, no further can, uh, no longer can you go to MMA without coming to us. But I, I do agree, it's probably changed since then.
Well, and, and, you know, you may recall the one time that we sent a, drafted a letter, uh, it had to do with when people got commercial approval under the commercial development review ordinance, could they just expand what they got approval, uh, beyond what they got approval for? And, uh, that sat on the prior town manager's desk for about a month, uh, in his in-basket, and, uh, that's not how you run town government.
So, so the question is, can you, um, cut, uh, existing zones into smaller sections to apply assigning ordinance to?
If you have different standards for each of those subsections, that's the question, yeah. If, 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 if the comprehensive plan didn't.
Or, or.
Provide that with.
Doesn't need to be specified elsewhere in the comprehensive plan to, to be able to do that.
Right.
'Cause, yeah, I was just thinking, all right, you could always put an add in a dinner under the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but you gotta go to town people for.
I mean, we can't just.
Well, I guess that's a question. Could we, could we do that without going to the, uh, towns, townspeople? Could we just have, have this?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
I don't know, I'll ask the question.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's town policy, it, it has to be approved by the.
You wanna get a vote anyways.
Yeah, no, that would, that would be illegal.
All right.
Is anybody opposed to getting a legal opinion from MMA?
Well, we.
No, but how we gonna do it? We're gonna go to the town manager, or how we gonna do it, how we gonna direct it?
Well, I, I think, um, why don't we, first things first, I'd be willing to come, put together a draft and bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, for everybody to look at.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yeah.
And in the meantime, should.
Or what I'll do is I'll probably email it to you, Nick, and you could put it in with the agenda.
And then give Carrie, Carrie.
It would make sense for, uh, or wait till after that meeting to go to Carrie, just to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I, I think we should, um, or maybe you can ask in the meantime. I mean, you know, um, if it has to go to the select board, then, you know, it's gonna delay things considerably.
Who sends it, right? Does the town manager send it?
No, no, we as town officials, different towns have different policies, but generally speaking, any town official can seek a, a legal opinion, uh, but you have to be a membership town, a member town.
And it's not costing the town anything, they don't send it.
Unlike going to the town attorney where you get charged two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, you wanna work on the draft?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that, if, if everybody's in agreement.
Okay. What further discussion do we have? I would say that, I know, uh, everybody's kind of said they've read the ordinance and stuff, but, uh, if we can review it again and, and give, get some thoughts on formatting and, and for our next meeting, so we have a good discussion on the content.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Lassard, are you and Denny gonna be able to make that meeting, which is the first Thursday?
Fourth, second.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, sure.
Listen, schedule one, you can't make it.
Do you want me to bring any, um, literature? I mean, I, I have draft ordinances from the various organizations that I used to belong to, uh, US Sign Association, International Sign Association, it's like three or four, uh, sample sign codes, uh. I mean, there is a various things, and the formatting that I used was what was basically established in those documents. In other words, you had to have a statement of purpose, part of the discussion that needed to come up in having a meeting was enforcement, how the talent was gonna enforce it, because we didn't really have any, uh, established enforcement for signed ordinance, because there was no signed ordinance. Probably need to generate, uh, some application forms, and maybe discuss fees and other things, uh, you know. But the other part that, uh, was stressed was definitions, more better than too few, because that's where you get into trouble. It's not the fact that a word isn't used, it's the fact that one doesn't exist, that's when you end up with a problem, because it's an interpretation. You don't want an interpretation. And then the idea of segmenting, uh, the sign zones, uh, you know, and that's why I used the existing, uh, draft of the plan, the comprehensive plan, it already existed, it was just easy to segment the depot away from Route twenty seven, uh, you know, some of these things were very obvious, because the character of the neighborhood was different, so you had to treat it differently. You know, North Belgrade is not the Lakes Village area, you know, so, even though they're both commercial zones, but, you know, how do you wanna treat them? So that's part of that discussion, and, uh, so, you know, formatting, obviously, formatting is something, if you wanted to match something else, then you go that way.
Gary, I was just gonna say, have you, see, have you gotten a copy of this?
Yep.
Yeah, you've noticed that all the, it all falls on your shoulders.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Give the commission.
But I do think we need to establish, you know, signed permit.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, as you said, you just, like any other ordinance, got all these kind of sections, uh, and how to deal with it, whether it's enforcement, permitting, fees, and, and, uh.
I mean, the fact that you work in Augusta, he knows how these things work. I mean, Augusta's sign ordinance, while you've been there, has changed two or three times. Uh, they got a, one that's more complicated than it needs to be, you know? You don't refer to signs being on a sign, uh, I don't know why that happened, but, you know, basically, all sign ordinance is a similar in one respect or another, some are much better than others, uh, you wanna make it clear. And what might not be clear to you is because you don't file for sign permits. You know, somebody who comes in from out of town and owns a business, this is not gonna be confusing, you know, they'll know what they're looking at.
Well, I was coming from the perspective of, um, just so you know, the kind of applicants we get under the commercial development review ordinance, I would say nine out of ten are not very sophisticated.
Yep.
They're not what I would call truly business people.
They're not Dollar Generals.
They're not Dollar Generals, they're not ham and lumbers, they're not Hannafords.
They're a little, uh, auto repair shop at the guy's house, so, uh.
Home hop stores.
Yeah.
Not even that, not even that's a.
Used car sales.
Yeah, used car.
Company.
So. So.
A sign company might file a permit, and they're from the.
Yeah, well, we'll see, I guess, but I, I'm, um, I'm ju- I was just thinking of the, the, the user audience, uh, based on our past experience, so.
Yeah, I, I've seen complicated ones. If you go to Massachusetts, you know, you find things are much more complicated than they need to be.
Yeah.
Even for a sophisticated talent.
Maybe, maybe this is a good way to, um, make, better way to make the point, um, I mean, I, uh, of the commercial development review ordinance is that I've been, gone through since we, I've been on the board for the last couple of, you know, almost three years now, I guess, only ham and lumber and Dollar General had consultants. Everybody else represented themselves, that's, that's what I mean, okay, so.
Well, that's okay, but it, basically, what I was looking at was. Well, that's okay, but basically, what I was looking at was similarities in towns. Not, even though Belgrade is rural in character, it is a destination nonetheless. And so, what kind of a destination? Well, it's not Boot Bay Harbor or Bar Harbor, but it has that same kind of audience that it appeals to, tourists and so forth. You had put in one of the things that you sent out, Arondo. Well, Arondo is not the destination, it's Kenbugport next door. You know, so, you know, it's just a road through Arondo. But I think Agunkwo and Wells and some of those other places are destinations and...
Yeah, but they're, they're also a sprawl, kind of a jammed up place.
You know, when you start looking at that, and you drive around and you, you know, you go inland and you look at lakes areas, you know, where there would be, so, Paris, again, more sophisticated downtown development and so on. Bethel...
Bethel would be one that I would think.
Yeah, I actually had your suggestion, because you suggested that before, I did add that to that table.
So, you start making similarities and you say, well, you know, what's the same and what isn't the same? And, you know, how can you draw from this and not draw from that? You know, how is it different? And what do they have in ordinance? And why? Why do they have an ordinance that way? And so, that's how you kind of get to it. I know that in the commercial development, you know, you look at industrial type of settings, you know, with Gagney and Hammond and, you know, the wood guy up in North Belgrade. Okay, well, that's industrial for sure, but they also have a bunch of signs, and they have a retail component to them. But it's different retail than the village, you know, the Lakes Village. And the depot is a village district, but that's not what it used to be, let's put it that way. You know, the train doesn't stop there anymore. So, some of the conversation goes around to the development side of things. What do you want it to be? What do you want it to look like?
And that, and that's the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan.
That's right, and you don't want the depot to look like 27, even though it's next door. It's different, so that's why I cut it apart.
Right, no, I, I understand your rationale, and it makes some sense. I just, we need to make sure we're on firm footing, yeah.
Find out if you can do it, and then find a way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and we will do that. George will have a draft next meeting.
Yeah. Nick, could you check with Carrie and make sure it just goes through her? You know, we would probably, I mean, if it's acceptable to her, we, you know, we would CC her on... I mean, obviously, she'll see the draft anyway, because she gets the whole package.
So, we'll have that, George's issue as part of the sign ordinance discussion. Shouldn't take too long to review it, and if she's ever, we'll send it this way. What else do we have?
I mean, that's all I could think of. I mean, it sounds like we have the start of a plan. I mean, we don't have much time really left before the permits start flowing, but...
I was surprised to have two for the next meeting, but...
Yeah.
Are they both showlands only, if they come?
One I've already got, the other one he picked up the application tonight.
Same contractor or no?
Rebuilds?
No, no, one of them, they wanna take off a section of their camp and replace that square footage somewhere else. Very nice plan, you'll be impressed.
That'll make it faster.
Yeah, we might have an hour instead of four or five minutes.
Yeah, depends on the quality of the application.
Gary, have you got any thing for it, any updates or anything?
None other than I won't be here at the next meeting. Hey, we're going in.
You going hunting?
Yeah.
Hunting in the Bahamas.
Oh, Bahamas. My wife tells me I need hearing aids, so, she's right.
They don't stock many pheasant in the Bahamas, do they?
Who, who, you said you're trying, gonna come, if you can, to the...
Yeah, I was gonna try to go to the 21st, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in Georgia, we're heading out on Monday.
Yeah, I...
I suspect Peter would probably try to come too.
I would think so.
You may wanna just remind him. You may wanna just remind Peter.
I'll send him an email. I got one other thing, and I just can't remember. When we concluded the approval of Mrs. Yotidy's medical marijuana facility next door or up the street here, did we, and maybe this is the best question for you, Nick, did we ask you to, there's a standard letter that Peter had come up with that goes to Gary along with the findings of fact?
We did that, didn't we?
Yeah, we did that right back.
Did that, okay, because I just couldn't remember any discussion of it, and so I think we know. Okay, very good, excellent.
Oh, the medical marijuana thing. Yeah, up in North Belgrade. What's, what's the story of that, and then come out of there? Did he go, remember the picture I took and all that? Did he talk to Carrie, did she say?
Didn't you take Carrie up there?
Yeah.
What'd she say?
Well, she talked to Roy, and he brought it up, and I thought...
Oh, to Mr. Tookie?
Right, right, and so, that's why I took the picture.
Yeah.
And I brought it down after the fact.
Right.
And you saw the picture, and you gave it to Carrie, right?
Yeah, Carrie had it.
All right, so where does it sit right now?
I haven't heard any updates on it.
Okay.
I haven't seen anybody around there at all, in all my travels. I've never seen, found that.
Well, after, what, a week after, I wasn't able to take any pictures, but they had a truck, two vehicles over there, three people going in and out the back way, and a car up front watching the traffic, and they were busy moving stuff around, okay? So, I didn't say anything about it, I haven't told anyone about it, but I was hoping to hear some back, some feedback, what the vehicle up there, and it's cloud and all that. And have you followed up with Mr. Tookie at all, or has anyone, you know, between...
What does it have to do with Mr. Tookie? Sean Thurston owns the building, I don't know what it has to do with Mr. Tookie. Why would I talk to the neighbor?
I think I'd like to postpone any conversation, delay the date, and with, I'll talk to the town manager about it, maybe you can join, you know.
That's fine.
Okay, you know, I don't think it's the place to talk about it any further.
Oh, no, it's fine.
Okay.
I just don't know why we'd talk about Tookie.
All right.
Maybe we should call DEA. Anyway, I got one other thing that I thought of. In reviewing the minutes today, should, and I would, I'd be willing to write it, it wouldn't be very long, but should we write a letter back to Mr., the fellow who wrote, the attorney who wrote the letter about the B and Bs, Airbnb that is...
Oh, Michael Avery, I think.
Yeah, saying thank you for your letter, we discussed it at the planning board, and we may be able to deal with some of that as we update the showland zoning ordinance, but there's nothing in our ordinances right now, something like that. Just let them know that we got his letter.
Probably be the courteous thing, the, I, I don't even remember who the letter was addressed to. Was it addressed to us or to the town manager?
I believe it was the planning board, I don't think it... Yeah, if it was the town manager, I guess, I'm not sure we should be writing the letter, but, oh, there it is, right there. Is it the planning board? Oh, you got the original? Yeah? How'd you get that?
Connections.
Yeah, it is the town planning board. And I just thought, just so he knows, we received his letter.
Yeah, no, that, that would be...
I could write it and draft and send it to Nick, and maybe you...
That would be a good idea.
You could sign it, Nick Poole, Secretary of Planning, or the planning board or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, that way, notice, we didn't just ignore it.
What was his name again?
Michael Avery, I think.
I've got a copy of it. Anything else?
I miss it, he's quiet, and there are connections.
Yeah, did you give that to Nick? Anyway, shall we adjourn?
Yeah, just wanna remind Nick, Mr. Lussard, he'll get a copy of the agenda for the next meeting along with Danny, catch all.
Yep.
Thank you for coming. We'll have more...
Wasn't Gary involved, helping you and Danny?
Who was that?
Gary, wasn't Gary involved? Was it you and just Danny working on that?
Yeah, basically, I...
Yeah, no.
Does I send you a copy of our agenda?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, sure.
Okay, so he'll...
I'm actually gonna give it to him. Something happened, so I'll forward the chat.
Yep. I can't remember, do we make motions to adjourn, or do we just adjourn?
Yeah, you make motions.
Motion, I make motion and adjourn.
I think.
I thought, others in favor? You know, I chair two meetings of the planning board, and both of them are done within an hour.
Well, that's high praise.